Good evening. I'd like to call this Tuesday, June 20th, 2017 meeting in Middletown City Council's order. If you please stand and join me in a moment meditation and the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Come on in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bronston?
Here.
Mr. Bohannon?
Here.
Mr. Moon?
Here.
Mr. Picard?
Here.
Mayor Mulligan?
Here. All right, our first item on the agenda is a public hearing this evening on the 2018 midpoint library tax budget request. I know the fiscal officer, Ms. Deborah Preston, is down for presentation. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm Deborah Preston, the fiscal officer for the midpoint library system, and tonight we're here to discuss the 2018 tax budget. However, before I do, I don't know if Travis was here, we're kind of coming in between meetings, but I want to give an overall with, overall view of some of the things that have been happening since the last time we spoke. Since last time I was here, we opened a new Trenton branch, which took us from 1,800 square feet to a newly renovated billing, building of 10,000 square feet. There he is. Travis, come on up. I hope we're casual enough, he can just join in.
That's fine, that's fine, sure.
This is Travis Spouts. He is our library director. And why don't I just turn it over to you, I was just talking about an overview of the things that has been going on.
Sorry, I'm late. We just finished our trustee meeting ourselves in Westchester, so I drove straight here. So you started with the Trenton?
Yes.
We're also starting, we did this last year at this time, we're doing a summer lunch program, since Middletown has a high number of students that are eligible for free and reduced lunches, the U.S. Department of Agriculture offers during the summer months a lunch, summer lunch program, so.
Can we get you a little closer to the microphone, Travis? I may not be picking you up from there, so.
From 11:30 to 12:30 each day, we're offering lunches for families, so anyone under the 18 and under can come in and get lunch free. We're also working on our summer reading club. We're hoping to hit 10,000 participants this year, and that's mostly children, to prevent the summer slide. As you see, it's well documented that students learn a lot over the summer months, and so libraries are happy to promote reading and education during the summer months. That's it. So, this year, we're happy to be serving the Middletown community and the whole of eastern half of Butler County, and ask for your support for this budget.
Turning to the 2018 budget, you had it in your packet, and just as a by way of review, you are a taxing authority, so this public hearing is the first step in passing our budget. Then with the board's approval, then it's going to go to Butler County Tax Commission, and then get approval there. So that's kind of the step there. The 2018 anticipated revenues are $8,190,000, and we're anticipating at this point expenditures to be $7,894,000. Part of these expenditures with the additional programming is going to come from this, also expanding our outreach, outreach services to homebound folks, and also staffing a new bookmobile, which we're going to be taking delivery of in the latter part of this year. So we're very excited about that, to be able to get to folks who won't be able to actually come into our doors. With that, I think you have everything. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions in the library for Travis or Deborah?
We only received one sheet, right? Did everybody get the same thing I had?
Yeah, that lists the tax levy rate, the .75.
.75?
Yeah.
Okay, is that all we're supposed to receive?
I believe so. I mean, is there more to the budget?
That's all that I have.
I apologize. I sent the comprehensive full tax budget, which outlines all the specifics.
It's in Excel spreadsheets, or there's different tabs, and maybe they only.
I don't know if, if, we had sent that over electronically, I don't know if something was lost in the translation there, but essentially what it does is it just goes through, as I listed out, the $8.1 million of revenues, and then how we're going to expend those revenues into the $7.9 million as, as a detailed. I could certainly send it over again, under separate cover.
Yeah, I think that'd probably be good to go ahead and do that, and that way we'd have that for council review. And we're just, it's a motion item this evening to receive and file that, so it's, it's just a matter of, I mean, we really don't weigh in, as a taxing authority, we just, the thumbs up or thumbs down, kind of a routine procedure, so.
Exactly.
I certainly appreciate your time tonight, coming down.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Oh, all right, since this is a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone to speak in favor of proposed 2018 midpoint library tax budget. Speak in favor of, okay, is there anyone to speak in opposition to the proposed 2018 midpoint library tax budget request? You want to speak in opposition to? All right, hearing done, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and we'll move on to our citizen comments. I've received one card this evening. Invite Mr. Joseph Zeke down to the podium. Good evening, thanks for joining us tonight. Could we get your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Joseph Zeke, 1511 Taylor Avenue.
All right.
I have a complaint about the issue on Taylor Avenue, about this guy that has too many cars. Been parked on my side, and the neighbor's side, other side, and there's been a lot of issue about how many cars he's supposed to have. I mean, he's got about 10, 15 cars, and we, the neighbors has called the law, I called the law. They came down, nothing's been, been done about it, and I think there's something that needs to be done about it.
Okay. Well, we appreciate you coming out this evening and bringing it to our attention. We'll have the city manager follow up and go from there. Thank you. All right, with no other comments, we can move to city manager reports. Mr. Atkins?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I will quickly address Mr. Zeke's concerns. We did have police and zoning out. The problem we have in this case is it's all parked in the right of way. The vehicles were looked at, they're all properly licensed, they are in the right of way as they're allowed to be. We've gone back on several occasions, you have to move them every 48 hours, they have been. I will tell you that the gentleman that owns all these cars is probably not as cooperative as he could be, but he is within the confines of the law, and unfortunately, I don't have any tools left at this particular moment that would allow me to curtail the number of cars that he has. They are legal, they are properly licensed, they are properly registered, and they're properly moved. So at this point, it is a neighbor dispute, that at least for the moment, we don't have any legal tools to get involved in. Move on, I gave you at the last council meeting a quick down and dirty priority sheet, and asked you all to take a quick look at it. I wanted to kind of go back to that, where we're at and why I asked you to do that. This shouldn't take more than about 10 minutes. As you recall, for those of you who were here when I interviewed to take this job, we were trying to find a way to start figuring out what our annual needs were, and how could we start finding sustainable ways to get back to road paving, our parks, neighborhood infrastructure, beautification, all those things that we want to be doing every year. What's the cost to break those down into meaningful pieces that we think we could start moving in the right direction and be able to sustain each year? And this is the beginning, again, it was a model, it was not really an exact number, but it's a model to try to get us back to sustainable revenues. We then talked about how could we potentially get that money? We talked about the number of jobs, the number of families, how we could get money that would equal, again, those revenues that would allow us to go sustainable every year doing the things that we want to do. So then we started talking about the master plan. You get the plan and plan to work. And so we started, you know, tonight you've got the downtown master plan before you for a second reading. The zoning code should be ready this fall. You've got the visioning from DMI and Middletown moving forward, housing study, airport, the last piece, which we have not started on yet, is a pedestrian bicycle transit traffic plan, basically. And once that's done, moving forward, and those priorities are set, the budget should be pretty straightforward. It should be, here's what we said we wanted to do, here's the priorities we put on everything, I should be able to give you a budget every year that looks like the master plan expected, because that's what we said we wanted to do. This is kind of the transition year. This is that year where, the first couple of years I was here, I asked you, this is what I want to do to try to move us forward. As we get to a year or two down the line, we will have already defined what we want to do and how we want to prioritize this. This is kind of that transition year between where I've started to take us and where we will eventually end up with the new master plan. So I wanted to spend a little bit of time talking about the 2018 budget. Staff will be getting to work on that in August, it'll come to you in the fall, and we wanted to try to get a little bit out in front of it and talk to you about, what are your priorities moving into 18? What do you like, the things that we're doing? What should we back off or add more to? And again, this is from the what-if visioning process, but it gets back to the same things that cities do well, lifestyle, quality of life, economic development, civic pride, infrastructure, it's the same thing that all cities are working on. Again, this is the transition year before probably the adoption of the new master plan in 18. Go right on. Each year, we have funds available to use on city projects, we have money from the general fund, we have grants, we have our HUD funds with CDBG Home, NSP, we have the Civic Development Fund, where we get our hotel motel tax, and other places where we, the auto and gas tax, that we will generate certain amounts of cash, some are earmarked, some are discretionary. And the idea was to take a quick pulse of council as to where we were on our priorities, so as we look at our funds that are available, we're again, bringing you a budget that's in the neighborhood of what you expected to see and what your priorities are. So I added all these things on to your, to your list, city cleanup, economic development, public safety, code enforcement, recreation, quality of life, transportation, and asked you to do this. This is what came, what we came up with when I took all five of you and I laid them out on the chart. Not a surprise, infrastructure was high priority, downtown plan implementation was a medium priority, deferred city maintenance, a lower priority. The ones in the middle were kind of a, that medium-low, transportation, recreation, beautification, and then we get back more, back into economic development, public safety, housing stock in our neighborhoods, which we're working on right now, and of source city marketing and communication. This is the chart, when I just plot your rough responses on, this is about kind of what I expected to see, this is, this makes sense to me with what we've talked about and where we've gone. Wanted to give council a chance to look at it and see if, now that you've seen all five of you there, is there anything that you want to move up, or you want to move down, or that you have concerns about? Because if you don't, we will probably take that and flavor that into the budget, so that, again, we hope that give you, be able to show you where the paving and the public safety and the housing stuff is, again, lesson for the, the lower priorities. But this is your chance to say, I like it, I hate it, we like to move this up, I have concerns about this.
I have a question and comment and concern, probably all in one, on the public safety.
Yes.
Of course, we all have our individual opinion about it, but public safety is really important to me, and in comparison of our issues with crime, with drugs, and all of those things, I think that the number of people that have worked in public safety, the police and fire, and, and the balance of what's going on with crime and heroin, I think there's a better balance when we have more public safety, and I think because we have less public safety officials, staff people in place, then the crime goes up. So I think that we need a little more balance, and of course, we all know that we had more people working in the police force compared to now, but that, that's my whole issue, I like the rest of it, but.
You would make public safety a higher, even higher priority?
Yeah, I would.
I just had a clarification point I was hoping to get from you. When you say discretionary, you know, as we get our monthly updates from Mr. Burton about what the finances are doing, some of that is probably yearly revenue that we can hope to, to see over and over, and some of it is a one-time shot in the arm.
Correct.
And I had inquired about how much of that was a one-time shot in the arm, and it seems about half of it. So I would want to be careful how we spend those monies that are only coming in one time, and, and, you know, just not get ourselves into a recurring situation with one-time monies.
I agree with that. My hope is that every time a school project ends, I've got a Kettering Health Network coming right behind it. You know, we've got all that money, all that land on the east end, we've got made industrial park, if I do a good job in, or economic, economic development, people are able to bring in new business, again, the hope is, at least for several years, we'll have a cycle of finishing projects with new projects coming online, that will extend that, and again, let us build towards the sustainable revenues, because you're right, it will go up for a while, and then it'll level off. But again, every time we add the Kettering, not only do we get the construction revenue, but I've got those hundred-plus jobs that now are permanently into our stream of income tax. It gives us a pretty close idea of where we're going to be and how much discretion we'll have. I hope, again, you guys get to see it each year, but hopefully I agree that the, we're smart enough to distinguish between the two and be smart about how.
And I think we're saying the same thing, I just want to make sure we're budgeting, not for the best, always for the best-case scenario, that we're being safe in our, in our estimate.
No, and that's one reason you're up a half a million dollars, is because we budgeted conservatively, and we will continue to do that.
Any other thoughts for Mr. Atkins on the rankings? I, I just reiterate, just real quickly on that, to Vice Mayor Bronston's comment about the public safety, you know, economic development, I think, and kind of that whole workforce stuff, as you illustrated in your earlier slides, you know, the more jobs you can generate certainly generates additional tax revenue to support, the additional growth, things like that, and I know, you know, we're looking at things like the SAFER Grant, that I think has done a good job to kind of get fire on track, and to the extent we can balance that, but, you know, I would think we'd want to work to do everything we can to attract, you know, new jobs and new employers to town, and focus on that.
Unfortunately, it all matters.
It does.
That's the thing, you know, they're all, like your children, your loved ones. The housing, you've got to have money housing for people to want to live in, you've got to have jobs for them to work at, you've got to have quality of life and a nice place, a beautiful city to live in, and, yeah, it, it's hard to say something's really low priority, but you're right, there are higher and lower priorities, so, thank you, I just wanted to take a quick look and make sure we were heading in the direction you wanted to. Second thing this evening, Carly Berman, our communications intern, has been with us for the past two years. She has served as our first communications intern, and has gotten us into social media with our Facebook and Twitter and Instagram, and she's helped me set up my city manager blog, which I've had going now for about a year. She's raised our visibility with partnerships with the Atrium Billboard and the New City Gateway Message Board out in front of Bob Evans. She is going to be leaving us in July and going to law school up in Cleveland. We wish her well. To that end, Jennifer and I have been looking at the intern position, and she has kind of laid out the platform for us of everything that we can be doing. We both agree now it's time to take our marketing up to that next level. We are going to recommend to council that we, and we're still figuring out what to call it, but some kind of an actual public, full-time, public relations person, come on board for the city to help us brand, to help us market, to help us do the things we need to do with our communication at that next level up, getting our word out not only to our residents but to the region. We will, at that time, probably late summer, early fall, come back to council with a recommendation on what that position's going to look like. My guess is it's going to be about 10,000 more than the intern position was, which was an entry-level position. By waiting a couple of months to let it fill and let Carly go and let that time go, we should, I don't think we'll need any extra money for '17, but it would be reflected, if council's acceptable, we would reflect that in the '18 budget with the new position and the upgraded pay. We will bring that back to your attention late summer, probably early fall, but wanted to kind of let you know what we were thinking, make sure there weren't any immediate drawbacks or concerns with that. I really think that's the next step to taking us to that next level of interacting with our public and the region in general. You were talking about public safety, if you, as you remember, about a year ago, we sat down with the fire department and worked out a deal that would allow us to apply for SAFER Grant, that got us 12 new firemen, and my criteria at that time was, as the SAFER Grant ends, you can't blow up the budget. I can't bring on 12 guys, and in year three, suddenly I have to pay for 12 new firemen, you know, add a million extra dollars. And so, fire union came to us, and Jake and the fire union and I worked through a number of things, and we came up with a, a package that worked, that by the time the SAFER Grant's over and those things are done, we will be running at approximately 2016, 27 budget numbers for payroll in fire, and be able to maintain the staffing that we have now with the extra 12 that are paid for with the grant. The FOP has approached us and said, we'd like to try that, too. So we are in the process of talking to them about how that might work. They have a different model of their payroll, they have some different challenges. One of the things with the SAFER Grant is at the end of the SAFER Grant, you don't have to maintain them if you don't want to. With the COPS Grant, at the end of year three, I believe, you have to maintain them for a fourth year on your payroll. And so there are going to be some challenges to, can you devise a system that doesn't blow up the budget in year four? And they are working with Jake on a way to do that. The COPS Grant application is due mid-July, which means they're on a fairly tight timeframe. I told them if they could get it together, we would be interested in taking it to council to July 5th and telling you what we think we can do, get your okay to move forward. If they can't get it together, then we may have to wait a year and look at it again in '18. Wanted to at least put that on your radar, it's one of the things you said is a high priority. We're going to talk about the heroin summit and the problems we've got with that. We are working hard, and the FOP is working hard with management, to try to find a way to, to add additional staffing, again, without blowing up the budget, without going back to 75, 80% public safety budget. So, wanted to let you know we're in that process right now, I don't know what the final evaluation will be, but we're trying to get you more cops in a way that won't blow up your budget. Also, in this year's budget, we put money away for a fire department strategic plan. One of the things I talked about, again, when I was getting hired, was some of our stations are older and they're not in the right place, as the city has grown. We are starting a study, a strategic study tomorrow, out at Atrium, they're letting us use their facility. We've got a number of external stakeholders in the community involved in that process, but the idea is to figure out, in a perfect world, how many stations do we need, where do they need to be located, so that we have the right equipment, properly spaced, to give everybody the best service in the community. If we can get that done, then we can, you know, as we get to '18, '19, we can talk about what this would cost, design those stations, talk about what the land might cost to do it, get to '19, '20, and '21, you start talking about how you pay for it. But again, the first step is what, what is it you're trying to get to? And so we will be starting that process tomorrow, as we move forward, and it gets closer to being done, we'll involve you guys in that, let you know where we're going, what it looks like. Wanted to let you know that is also in the works right now. Finally, we had our last heroin summit, our 10th, I believe, at Atrium Medical Center yesterday. I had sent out a little bit of information, there was some, Rick McCrab had written a nice journal article about it, and we had had some questions, and so I wanted to kind of reiterate some of the things that were covered, for those of you that weren't there last night. We are on process. If we keep the pace we are at, we will spend about $100,000 on Narcan this year. And the reason is twofold, number one, our overdoses through May are, have already exceeded 2016. The second one is, it used to take two milligrams of Narcan to revive people, that's one dose. We've had as many as nine doses to revive one person. And so it has gone from bad to worse. Through June 17th, we've been out on 577 overdose calls, all of 2016, we were, did 458, so we have already exceeded by 100, and what, almost 20 overdose calls, what we did the entire last year. We have 51 deaths year-to-date from heroin overdoses. We had a total of 74 in 2016, which obviously means if we hold pace, we will have record deaths again this year. The amazing thing to me is, we have become so proficient at using Narcan, that we are saving about 92% of the people that we are going out on for overdoses. We are saving a lot of lives, and we're running our poor guys into the ground. Thank God we got the extra 12, because they are, they're running hard, they're running fast. Go through the other stuff I've got, and it's funny, with Lieutenant Burke up there, who ran narcotics, and when I was prosecutor, he will tell you, and I'll tell you, that the tactics have changed. This is what makes this such a problematic issue for us. It used to be you had a crack house, and you'd work a buyout of the crack house, you'd go in, you'd blow the crack house up, and that place would go away, until another crack house opened up. Doesn't work like that anymore. It's all cell phones, and, and, you know, you walk out to the back of an alley, somebody comes from Dayton into the alley, and in 15 minutes, they're on the way back to Dayton, and you're in a house somewhere. All of our heroin addicts are fairly transient, they don't have a place to stay. The addresses they give us as our home addresses, half the time are not. It's where they chose to flop, where they are ODing is not where they're staying. So again, it's hard to track them down and get productive things going on. The drugs have changed. Two years ago, it was heroin, then it went to fentanyl, now it's carfentanil. Now it's the gray death that's coming out of Cincinnati, the, the strength keeps getting more intense, which means instead of two, you need four, you need eight, you need, you know, 10, 12, 14 grams of Narcan to bring you back. I will tell you that, talking to Paul and Fire, if we get you soon after you've done it, there's almost a 100% chance we're going to save your life. The people who are dying, in most cases, are the ones where they overdosed and nobody found them until it was too late to revive them, two, three, four hours later. We've talked a little bit about Ohio law. We have not a lot of options, we provide care, if you call us and we come out of service, we generally have to treat whatever condition you have, which means if you're OD'd, we are going to respond with Narcan and do what's appropriate, and recommend that you go to the hospital. I can't make you go to the hospital. Under Ohio law, we now have a Good Samaritan law, which means in many cases, when we go out on a overdose, and you see a needle still in their arm, we have to ignore it, because we have to allow, we want to encourage people to call and save people's lives, which means if there's paraphernalia and stuff on-site where it took place, we have to ignore it so that we can save the life. There are just all kinds of sentencing problems. I can tell you when I was prosecutor, that, and, you know, on my fourth year, we had people that I had gone through, that was their fourth time. Burke and his guys would go out, and they'd bust them, they'd take them, they'd have light sentencing if you're less than F3, you'd go to jail, prison for six months, you'd be out, you'd get caught again. You know, I was on my fourth cycle with a lot of those people when I left prosecution and went to community revitalization, and so we don't handle the dealers well. It just goes on and on and on. The ages, we have people from their teens, we have people all the way up into their 70s who are heroin addicts. I ran on my blog this morning, NBC Nightly News had a article with Lester Holt last night, Inside America's Most Opioid Addicted County, and it was Montgomery County, Ohio, it was Dayton. WCPO ran an article this morning stating that Hamilton County is on track, they have the most drug overdose deaths, deaths for any county in the United States. And so you've got Dayton and Cincinnati, Dayton's the most addicted theoretically, Cincinnati's going to have the most deaths of any county in the United States, and we're right smack dab between them. And so we're, you know, the, the answer is, we're not probably going to keep them out. Couple of years ago, we were spending a million and a half dollars a year responding to this problem, I have to believe it's more than that, we have more officers, we have more firefighters, we have more overdoses, we have more Narcan, we have to be spending, we have more indigent burials than we had two years ago, on and on. And so what do we do as a city? The last couple of summits have been somewhat frustrating, and I've tried to, to preface that by saying, yes, that's true, but everything we're doing is working. We are implementing the best practices that are available in the United States that we find. We have five canine drugs, drug dogs, that are out pulling drugs every day off the streets of Middletown. Our patrol and our narcotics division are having more drug arrests than they've ever had. All overall drug arrests are up 36% through May, felony drug arrests are up 61% from last year through May. We're arresting more people than ever. The heroin response team has placed 140 people into treatment in the last year for Middletown. Middletown Court also has their Vivitale program to reduce dependence. Middletown Court also has their Vivitale program to reduce dependency. Uh, we are making progress in many areas, but the problem is growing faster and changing faster than our resources. So, this is the, the message that we had it yesterday. And, you know, with all the good things going on in this community, this is still a challenge. Uh, and I've said this many times, I said it in my blog today. This is a Middletown problem. It's also a Butler County problem. It's also a Southwest Ohio problem. It's also an Ohio problem. It's also a national epidemic. This is not something that's just in Middletown. It's in every affluent, uh, community in Ohio and certainly in Southwest Ohio. Uh, and we are dealing with it with all the resources that we can throw at it as productively as we can. So, that's what I have and I can, that's what, or I am open to any ideas we all.
Questions for Mr. Atkins?
Anything we can do.
I, I do. First of all, I appreciate everything you've done. I appreciate everything the police have done, everyone who's been involved in the heroin summit. And my comments are not meant to be critical of anybody at all. But my concern is that it's out of control. I, I, I just heard you say how we're, we're arresting more people, we're doing more things, but we have far more overdoses, we have far more deaths. So, from the standpoint of trying to enforce it, yeah, we're getting better at it, but it, it's out of control.
It is.
And I'm sorry, it's been out of control for 60 years because I recall hearing of the war on drugs when I was a little kid. And it's only getting worse and worse. So, if I may, just a couple of questions. You mentioned that when we get called and we go out, we have to do whatever we have to do there. Is there a law that says we have to go out?
If we want to get out of the business, we have the right to get out of the business. We could privatize it, we could not provide EMS service. I don't think you, I, I will ask Loaf to look into it, but I don't think you can pick and choose what you go out to. I think if you get a call, we either take the calls or we don't take the calls.
And I would, I would appreciate it if you'd get an opinion on that. My second question is, if we go out and we're getting called for a heroin overdose and so, we get there and we have to give somebody nine doses of Narcan, well, what if the squad only has four? Do we stop at that point? Or do we call another squad and bring us some more?
We call another squad and they bring us more.
Okay. So, let me ask you this then. We make decisions about what we're going to do. For example, we have a lot of people in our community who have cancer. We get a call from someone who, who's sick with cancer. We don't give them free chemotherapy. We have a heart attack. We don't do a free bypass. So, there's, there's a limit on what we do and somewhere, someone has made that decision about what we're going to do. We're not going to do the chemo, we're not going to do the bypass. So, at some point, someone sat down and said, "We're going to respond and this is what we're going to do." Okay? So, bear with me for a second. So, let's say that we have all of these people and we're running around doing all of this. We're spending an enormous amount of city resources on it. So, my thought is to, to back up for a second. I don't think arresting all of these people and putting them in jail is the answer. I agree with the chief, addicts don't belong in jail. On that point, what I would like to suggest is that we consider a summons. Someone does this, we give them a summons to appear in court later, so we don't occupy the jail, we don't tie up the police doing that. They have to appear. We draft some legislation saying that if you, uh, overdose on heroin because it's an illegal substance, you've committed a crime and your punishment for that crime will be that you'll have to appear in court and then we're going to sentence you to community service. We're not going to put you in jail. We don't want to spend more resources on you than we have to, but you're going to have to show up for community service. So, if I may, if we send a squad out tonight on an overdose, how much does that cost?
Well, it's a team of three, you know, three either EMTs or paramedics, plus the cost of responding and every bit of, every bit of an hour or two.
$100, don't we bill for a EMS run?
Okay. So, whatever amount that we bill through, let's say if it's $600.
Right.
And as part of this legislation, that community service, community service would have to equal repayment of that money because I suspect that most of these overdoses are unproductive people in society, probably people who've never or hardly ever paid any city income tax or anything, or any other tax for that matter. So, I'm suggesting that we consider that program. Now, I realize those people aren't going to show up. So, I'm going to go a step further. So, on the first time you do it, you have to work however many hours it takes to repay them. On the second time, you've got to work twice as much. We keep track of what's going on. And then, we have names and so on of people. So, when we get that call, what's the name? And if the name is John Smith and John Smith has done this two times and he's not shut up and he's not done anything, we need to make a decision. Are we going to respond to John Smith? Because frankly, I'm to the point of, we need to make a decision that perhaps we don't. John Smith obviously doesn't care much about his life, but he's expending a great deal of our resources and we can't afford it. So, I think we need to do something along those lines about figuring out whether or not we're going to respond. And frankly, my point is that I want to send the message to the world that you don't want to come to Middletown to have an overdose because you might not get a response. You might not have somebody show up with Narcan to save your life. So, I realize I'm saying, "We're going to push our problem off to everybody else." I'm only a city councilman in Middletown. I care about Middletown. And if that's what we have to do, I think we need to consider doing that.
We have talked a little bit about a similar style. Uh, she and I have talked about this a little while. Uh, there, there, I don't remember, somebody up in Davisburg, was it? That was charging inducing panic. They were charging inducing panic for that run, uh, and they ran into some legal problems. Uh, the Good Samaritan law has canceled a lot of that out that, that has just come on the books in the last, what, 90, 120 days? That, and so, we said, "Okay, if we can't charge them with inducing panic, can we charge them with disorderly conduct misdemeanor four?" So that we've got something to grab ahold of them. Uh, and we, that was the discussion we had. Is there a way to get, grab them? And if nothing else, make sure they get the message that we want them to get into treatment.
I, I understand where you're going with that. But I don't think, I'm sorry, I don't think that's the way to go either.
Yeah.
But my thought is that we need to instill in them some fear of overdosing three times in the city of Middletown. Not that they're going to have some punishment, not that they're going to have a fine because they're never going to be able to pay a fine, not that they're going to spend 10 days in jail because we, it just costs us more money.
Yep.
I don't want to spend money doing that. I want to spend time scaring people about the fact that if you're overdosing in Middletown, someone might not show up to save your life. And I think at this point, that's the road we need to go down. I'm sorry, we need to think outside of the box. When, when the Boring County Sheriff was here a few weeks ago and I asked him that question, to think outside the box, what did he give us? He gave us the same stuff. And I understand that. That's what they're doing and they see that they're doing some good because they're arresting more people and, and all this stuff. But you're falling so far behind.
We are falling.
Just look at the numbers you just quoted.
Yep.
You know, we're going to have 100% more deaths, we're going to have 100% more overdoses.
Yeah.
And, and so, if we've arrested enough people or we've done enough to, to cut back 2%, we're 99% behind. And it's just, it's going to continue to grow. So, I think, I'm suggesting to you, I'm asking you to think about this. That, and my idea, as I said, is to come up with a plan to scare people so that they don't want to come to Middletown. You said, "Most of them are transients." They don't live here anyway. They just came here to do their drugs. So, if word gets out there that if you're doing drugs in Middletown and a squad isn't going to show up, maybe you're not going to come to Middletown to do it.
We're happy to look at that. Thank you.
That's good.
Anything else from Mr. Atkins? All right. Is that everything?
And that is everything.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, that brings us to our consent agenda. Ms. Gank?
For your consideration tonight, we have the approval of the City Council Minutes from June 6th, 2017, to confirm personnel appointments of Denise Hopper to the position of Administrative Assistant, Community Revitalization, Community Development, and Nicholas Gillespie and Matthew Hale to the position of Maintenance Worker in the Department of Public Works and Utilities, and to receive and file OSF Office for Matthew Condo, Aaron Cox, Izal Leonard, and Robert Miller.
All right. Thank you. Do we have a motion for the approval of the issues and actions listed on the consent agenda?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Bronston.
Yes.
All right. Uh, we have one motion item this evening?
To receive and file the 2018 tax budget request for the midpoint library system.
All right. That was the subject of our public hearing. Uh, do we have a motion to receive and file the, uh, 2018 tax budget request for the midpoint library system?
So moved.
Give a second.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Ms. Bronston.
Yes.
All right. And that brings us to council comments this evening. Mr. Picard?
Thank you, Mayor. The only additional comment I have to make is that the 4th of July is coming up. I hope everybody has a great time to come out to the parade. I won't be there, but I'm sure it will be a great time for everyone involved and, uh, spend some time with your family during the holiday.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Bohannon?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, as well, I'd like to, uh, invite everyone out. Uh, it's a little strange, uh, dates this year due to the fact the 4th falls on Tuesday. But, uh, we're going to have the, uh, parades on, on Tuesday, the 4th, but the fireworks are the 3rd on Monday. So, uh, just adjust your schedule accordingly. Um, also, last week, I'd like to commend Mr. Atkins, Chief Mutersbaugh, and Lieutenant Cunningham. They had a little forum get-together, if you will, at the, uh, Jabba Johnny's. And we had some citizens there that were, uh, asking some questions and Mr. Atkins and, uh, Chief Mutersbaugh were very poignant in, in their answers. And I think, uh, some of them came away with a better understanding of what goes on and how we do things in town. The other thing, uh, some birthdays. Number one, our vice mayor has a birthday today, so happy birthday to you.
Thank you.
And personally, uh, my mother-in-law has a birthday tomorrow and I do love my mother-in-law. And my wife has a birthday on Friday, so we're, happy birthday to them.
Busy week.
Yep.
Busy week.
That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Moon?
Yes, just, uh, just one item there. Uh, last Friday, I believe it was, I had the opportunity to sit in this chambers in a, in a different seat and see, uh, Judge Melinda Cook Howard sworn in to, uh, take over, uh, Judge Wall's position. I want to wish her the best of luck. I know she's going to be an excellent judge and she certainly has some big shoes to fill. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Bronston?
I agree with, um, Councilman Moon. She does have, uh, big shoes to fill, but, uh, I've talked to her and met her, um, a few years ago and I think she's got the tenacity to do it. So, uh, congratulations to her. Uh, also, we start the, uh, family movie night this Friday. Is this the beginning of it or do we have one?
This is the third one, I believe.
Is it already? Okay. So, uh, Friday night is family movie night at Goldman Park. Um, we have the multicultural festival coming up on Saturday and that's going to be a busy day for me. But, um, Wanda Glover with the Second Ward Council, uh, has organized that and it's always a interesting event. I hope it doesn't rain this weekend and, uh, there's a little parade there and, uh, vendors and a lot of activities. So, uh, if you're not doing anything Saturday, that starts at 11:00. I think the parade is at 10:00.
10:00.
Something like that. Uh, also, we have the Dora Concert Series downtown, so come out for the music downtown. It's going to be a lot of fun.
You're sponsoring it this year, huh?
No.
Oh.
No.
Okay. Anything else, Ms. Bronston?
No.
All right.
Thank you.
Very good. Uh, I too would like to wish everyone a happy 4th of July. Uh, we do, it's great that we're having, uh, the fireworks and, uh, should be a very nice show with, uh, Atrium sponsorship. Certainly appreciate, uh, them stepping up and, uh, doing a, a great show for us even though it is on the 3rd, uh, get a better deal that way and people can go see ours and take in someone else's too on, on the 4th. So, make it a nice, uh, nice long weekend. Um, I'd also like to remind folks that our, uh, first Tuesday meeting in July, since it falls on the 4th, will be actually on the 5th in, uh, here in the council chambers at 5:30. So, we'll be meeting on Wednesday to accommodate the holiday. So, um, we'll be worn out from the parade, I'm sure.
Yeah.
And with that, we can move on to our legislation this evening. Ms. Fox?
Good evening, Mayor. There are nine items of legislation on tonight's agenda. Five items which are considered emergency legislation. Therefore, we will need a motion to waive the charter provision requiring two separate readings as to the following items. It would be Resolution Number R 2017-10, Resolution Number R 2017-11, Resolution Number R 2017-12, Ordinance Number O 2017-22, and Ordinance Number O 2017-24.
I make a motion to suspend the charter, uh, that requires reading on two separate days for Resolution Number R 2017-10-11-12, Ordinance 2017-22 and -24, and to be declared, uh, an emergency to be read one time only.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Bronston.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
First up for this evening is Resolution Number R 2017-08. This is a resolution approving and adopting the downtown master plan. This is a second reading and is ready for action.
All right. We've had three presentations on this. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion or comments? Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Bronston.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Next is Resolution Number R 2017-09. Next is Resolution Number R twenty seventeen dash O nine. This is a resolution approving and adopting the what-if visioning plan. This is also a second reading and ready for action.
All right. We have had some presentations on this as well too, and the staff report, do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion or comments? Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bronston.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Next is Resolution Number R twenty seventeen dash ten. This is a resolution authorizing the transfer of monies from various funds to the income tax fund declaring an emergency.
Mr. Atkins, do we have a staff report?
Yes, Your Honor. As part of the twenty sixteen audit process, we brought to our attention that one of the ways that we transfer money is from the income tax fund to various funds as part of our budgetary process. During changes in state law, that is no longer the correct way to do it. We've been doing it for almost ten years. This is the first time the audit has caught it. They have asked us to make the changes. What's going to happen over the next three resolutions is the Transit Fund with a hundred and twenty thousand, the Airport Fund with eighty-five thousand, the Conservancy Fund with thirty-four thousand, which are in the right place, but not in the right way, are going to be transferred out of their funds and back to the Income Tax Fund. After that happens, the second piece of legislation is going to take it from the Income Tax Fund and transfer it to the General Fund. The third piece of legislation is gonna take the exact same amount of money and put it right back where it was, back in the Transit Fund, back in the Airport Fund, and back in the Conservancy Fund. And so those will be three pieces of legislation in a row. I did bring our finance director here in case there were questions, but it's a matter of, and if we do that, they'll be happy. And so we said, felt, and that, and it has to be done by June thirtieth, so. This was brought to us late last week. I did alert council at the end of the week that this was coming. Everything's in the right place, but it didn't get there in the right order, so we are going to fix that with these three pieces of legislation.
Any questions for Mr. Atkins?
I have just, just one. You mentioned that we've been doing it this way for ten years. Is there anything we're gonna need to correct in the past or since the audit's been done, there's no?
I don't believe there's anything.
So, so the legislation before you is actually correcting twenty sixteen. We're booking all of the entries in twenty seventeen, but it's correction for twenty sixteen. We'll change it this year. We'll have to come back later this year with another supplemental appropriation and fix this year's as well because obviously we budgeted the same way. In twenty eighteen going forward, we will do it the correct way.
What happened in twenty thirteen?
Yeah, those years are done and over with, so yeah, there's no need for a correction on any of this.
Any other questions? All right. All right, so do we have a motion to adopt Resolution Twenty seventeen dash ten?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion or second. Any other discussion or comments? Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Bronston.
Yes.
And the second part of this, Your Honor, would be Resolution Number R twenty seventeen dash eleven. This is a resolution authorizing the transfer of monies from the Income Tax Fund to the General Fund and declaring an emergency.
Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion or comments? Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Ms. Bronston.
Yes.
And the final part of that would be Resolution Number R twenty seventeen dash twelve. This is a resolution authorizing the transfer of monies from the General Fund to various funds and declaring an emergency.
Okay, do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Okay, a motion or second. Any other discussion or comments? Glad the accountants will be happy, so. Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Bronston.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Next up is Ordinance Number O twenty seventeen dash twenty-two. This is an ordinance authorizing a contract with John R. Jorgensen Company to repair concrete as part of the twenty seventeen sidewalk curb and gutter program. It is also to reconstruct and resurface roadways as part of the twenty seventeen local street improvements program, and this would be also declaring an emergency.
Okay, do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Atkins, anything to add from the second?
No, Your Honor, this presentation was the last meeting, it's ready for your action.
Any other discussion or comments? Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Bronston.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.